Twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Margot, please take it away.
I am Margot G. K., the Town Clerk of the Town of Morristown. Do hereby state that it is seven-thirty-two PM on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and that this regular meeting is being held in Council Chambers, two-hundred South Street, Morristown, New Jersey. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided according to law by written notice to the Morristown Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Town of Morristown, and to the Newark Star-Ledger both more than forty-eight hours ago. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board at Town Hall and filed with the Office of the Town Clerk of the Town of Morristown. I do further state that I shall enter into the minutes of this meeting, the statement that such notice was furnished as particularly described by me in this public announcement. I will take a roll call. Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman Anna Cohn.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Here.
Councilman Polichuk is excused this evening. Councilman Russo.
Here.
Councilwoman Silva.
Pressing.
And Council President Umbreak.
Here.
Mister President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there are four items on the consent agenda. I will be pulling two and three to be considered together. Would any member of council like to pull either one or four?
Could we vote on number four separately, please?
Yes, so I will do it in three sets. The first is item number one, approval of minutes, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, Town Council Regular Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, on the adoption of a consent agenda, item number one, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anna Cohn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
For consent agenda items two and three, that's approval of minutes for June twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, both executive session and the regular meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anna Cohn.
Abstain, I was absent.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four, the extension of license premises, application by, applications by the homestead.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilman.
I will be voting against this for the reasons that I had put on the record before. I think this is actually a function more appropriate for partnership. I do get noise complaints from neighbors. I think if we are going to expand this program where we're allowing liquor establishments to extend their license to private property that they do not own, I think maybe, I know we said we would bring it back, and if it went well with the other two, we would may add two, and I believe all we're doing with this is adding to, but for the reasons that I cited before, I will be voting no.
Okay. Council President.
Yes, sir.
This particular application actually has for three.
I have had conversations with the applicant, and he's willing to do whatever the council
is willing to offer, so all it requires is a motion to amend if you desire to give him less than three.
And I think the days that we initially had discussed were Saturday, September thirteenth, and Saturday, October fourth, if I recall correctly.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council?
Well, what are the times that we?
Twelve to eight.
Twelve PM to eight PM. And my understanding was breaking everything down by seven PM, and everything is cleaned up and done by eight PM.
Yeah.
You know, and the other concern with partnership was you're taking away valuable retail parking space on the busiest retail days of the year. So doing one or two, now expanding them, you're taking fifty-two Saturdays and you're making it forty-eight soon to be. If we expand it even further, it's just taking away Saturday shopping time. But I think everybody knows where my position is on this.
Yes.
So I can stop there.
Well, one of the aspects that we spoke about this is that we will hear from feedback from people, and I don't know if any council member have heard anything.
I hadn't heard, no, I hadn't heard any complaints. I spoke to Councilman Russo, he hadn't heard any complaints from constituents, if you want to share.
Yes, so no, so there was one person who had mentioned something about noise, it was just one. And again, that one person's obviously very important, but no, I wasn't in flux with a number of calls, but there was one person who did mention, you know, the noise, but it wasn't that it went after the time a lot at eight o'clock. So obviously, I respect them for reaching out to me, and I continue to encourage it, but it was just the one resonant that just mentioned noise during a lot of time, not before or after the time.
Sure. Okay, okay.
And I ask at the Morris Parking Authority meeting this week if they have received any complaints about parking, and they haven't.
I actually did get complaints from several of the retail people on South Street. I got three about Saturdays being in the parking, and particularly the establishments down at that end of South Street, and they were not thrilled that the parking lot was being used for an all-day event as opposed to being available for their retail. And that was three businesses.
Okay, so if you would like to make a motion to amend.
A motion to amend from three to two.
On nine thirteen and ten four.
That's correct.
Second.
Oh, thank you. Okay, on the amended motion for consent agenda, item number four, Councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Anna Cohn.
No.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
And Council President Umbreak.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing on any matter. When called upon, please approach the microphone, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Be advised that any derogatory comments targeting members of council and/or administration may be ruled out of order.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Kim. I live on forty-one Elm Street, and I'm also a member of the Shade Tree Commission. I know you're all very familiar with Kristen Ace, who keeps you all informed about our activities, but I wanted to specifically speak in support of the Community Forestry Management Plan, or CFMP, that is before you this evening. This is something that was not just a small document, but it's something that is the product of several hours of work, collaborative work between all of us, really thinking through a five-year plan of what we type of activities we want to do in the town, so product of a lot of thought and effort, and so I would strongly encourage you to vote in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Hi, everybody. I am Kristen Ace. I live at twenty-four Franklin Street, and I'm here representing the Morristown Shade Tree Commission. I want to echo what my fellow commissioner said about the Community Forestry Management Plan. I want you to know that it wasn't just the commission working hours and hours, we also looped in our town engineer, Anthony Divizio, and our DPW supervisor, Joe Curlo, and of course, our town administrator, Gillian Barrick. So this is our five-year plan. I know, reading it, you will see how much work we've already done, where we are, where we are going, all the partnerships that we have formed over the past, oh my gosh, is it thirteen years, Tim? I don't remember.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's been a while. Anyway, I just am hoping that you all unanimously vote this in. Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Kristen. Mr. Duarte.
Hi, Debbie McCumber, Two Red Shell Avenue, Morris Township. I'm representing the group.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. Representing the group that organized the No Kings Rally, and we'd like to thank you very much for providing us with the venue, with the mayor's participation, with, we'd like to thank the police and the support that they brought out for it, and we're just generally appreciative of having a place where we can put forth our constitutional right to rally. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to add on to that, I don't know if you need my name and town for the record?
I think we do for the record.
Amali Duarte, Mendham Township. Councilwoman in Mendham Township, and also representing Morris County Democratic Committee, our other sponsors for the event, which was the Eleventh for Change, New Jersey Citizens' Action and Planned Parenthood Action Fund of New Jersey. So I, of course, want to thank the mayor. You're always such a great partner when we come to you and say, we want to put on a rally, is that okay? When? In two weeks? But we always, with the administration, I in particular want to, of course, thank Jill again, but also Caitlin Posthumus, I think is her, she is fantastic, a great partner and just so responsive to the emails, et cetera. And then I also wanted to just really thank the police chief, Darnell Richardson, the director of public safety, Michael Corcoran, Jr., the patrol division commander captain, Michael Andrew Sano, and also Lieutenant Brian LeBarre, because I had several conference calls with them leading up to the event, and they were just, again, fabulous partners. And the day of the event did such a great job, making sure that everyone felt safe and comfortable and protected, and as Deb said, that we were able to rally and speak out in our constitutional rights. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
We're not much for public speaking. I'm Dana Levens of Chester Township, and this is.
I'm Kendall Cornelio Alter of Mendham Borough.
We just, we were part of the planning committee, and we would like to thank all of you for the support and the opportunity to do as the lady said.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw Billy Byrne's hand up. You want to come up, Bill?
Good evening. My name is Bill Byrne, and I live at one-hundred Franklin Street, Morristown, and I'm here to talk about the light that's been kind of like on death, death of yours. I mean, I know it's a state thing, but, you know, I mean, because even people in the community that have been, you know, talking about this light and, you know, the people just gave up because they feel that, you know, nothing's being done with it, and it's sort of like on death of yours. Now, this is just people that I know from in the community that told me, you know, and they said, oh, we got to keep on waiting and waiting. And so I like to know what's going on with the light that we've been talking about for decades now, you know, and, you know, getting it, getting up there by that intersection where it says stop, you know, for pedestrians, it's the law. I mean, just seems like it's going on death of yours in states, taking their sweet time on this, so, you know.
Bill, just for clarification, the light you're talking about is the Hawk at Hamilton?
Hamilton Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just, so everybody knows what you're talking about.
So it's the light, you know, that we're talking about getting on Hamilton Street there. So, you know, got to tell the state to get a move on because, you know, I mean, from what I understand, somebody got hit there one time, and they lived, but, you know, the town might not be so lucky next time where somebody will get killed, you know, and then it's this state dragging their feet, so we got to tell the state to get a move on.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. All right, I will close public session. Council responses to public session.
Well, Bill, on the Hawk, Gillian, you could give an update on that.
I'll give an update.
Also, because I think the last thing we saw actually was a couple of months ago, you were actually applying for a grant for funding of that. Go ahead.
We're literally just waiting on DOT.
DOT still.
I email them, and email them, and email them, and then we get no response.
I'll speak on it.
Yeah. Tough group.
No, I'll speak on it.
Okay. Any other council responses? Thank the ladies for coming out, and we're happy that Morristown welcomes you with open arms, and you can have your rallies here, and we appreciate you coming out in this heat and thanking us. We should be the ones thanking you, so thank you.
Guess I'm not going to have to follow that.
Okay, so let's move on to the report of the mayor and town officials.
Okay, well, we'll start with Billy's Hawk Beacon. So, thank you, ladies.
Hi, thank you.
So I think Anthony will attest, our engineer, and maybe Gillian, I may have copied you on my last email to scathing email to DOT, and it was pretty scathing. I think it got a response, if I'm correct, from DOT all the way to the commissioner. Yes, we've been waiting a long time. I think the last comment we got back, and I've called the governor's office many times on this, was sixty weeks? Something like fifty-two weeks?
Something like that.
Something like that. It's like, they didn't even create it yet. So the downside or the upside is, no matter who's going to be in the State House in November, between transit, DOT, and other issues that need to be addressed in the state, those are the issues that are important to us and municipalities, and we will hammer home and continue to hammer home DOT, and the commissioner is well aware of it. You know, I'm dealing with other issues also with DOT, with some of our traffic patterns, and I just, we're just on a different page. So hopefully, we'll continue to put the pressure on Billy, because that is an important intersection. And the crazy part about it is, this is just a Hawk Beacon where somebody's going to cross, they push a button, and the light flashes so cars that are coming know somebody's crossing the road. It is not rocket science. But man, trying to get DOT to get this thing done, we did our part with the ordinance, we did our part, what we had to do.
Money's waiting.
Money's waiting. State is just not doing their job, and they need to be held accountable, you know, so. But thank you, Billy, for bringing it up. It'll, it'll, it's weekly, trust me, you know, and we can only do so much. We don't, we're not a higher government than the state. Okay, again, thank you to those ladies that left. They were very humble, they really spoke pretty loudly at the rally, so they can speak publicly, so they were very, very quiet today, but they did put a heck of a job. And again, what they said with recognizing our police department, from our chief to public safety director to captain and lieutenant LeBarre, I hear nothing but great things about what that team put together to handle four thousand people in our, in front of Town Hall. They did a tremendous job, and also the rank and file, from sergeants to police officers and lieutenants, everybody that was involved, well-prepared. Our police department is superior in many, many aspects, and crowd control and getting ready for these types of things, they're outstanding in being prepared. So again, hats off to the Morristown Police Department. All right, quickly, Thrillin' Heights Middle School, eighth grade graduation was the seventeenth. So for those of eighth graders.
My daughter.
The council president.
Yep, my daughter.
Congratulations. The eighteenth of June, four hundred and seventy-nine students graduated from Morristown High School. Four, seven, nine, pretty big class. And it was well-attended and well-covered by our press that's in the front row over there. See, I called them press, I didn't say something else. See, he's smirking, what?
Kyla was a part of the graduation.
I know, and that's our councilwoman, Chiba Foster's daughter graduated. So it was a great graduation, it went really smooth, they did a great job, the high school and what they put together. The twenty-second of June, we had William Butchy Barber Day at Caldwell Park. Betty Ann and Dr. Barber did a great job, councilwoman, council president spoke. It was, it was a great, it was hot, but the cloud cover was enough to where it got off well, and the bands were excellent. The music was great, and hats off to Barbara family and to all that attended, especially Betty Ann Bryant, who really, really digs in and makes these things happen with other people. It's a really, it's a group of people that make this happen, so congratulations. Butchy. On the twenty-fourth, grand opening ribbon-cutting, which was today, I want to thank Anthony Divizio in the back and the engineering department. For those who like to play volleyball, there is a state-of-the-art volleyball, beach volleyball court in Ledgerwood, and I got to tell you, we were all down there today, and it was, it's beautiful. People are already playing on it. It was a high school student that came to our council two and a half years ago and advocated, she's a volleyball player, advocated for volleyball because it's a big thing in high school now and universities, and it's becoming very popular, and she made her case, the council agreed with her, authorized it, and it is now built and installed, and it was played on already. So that's going to be a great asset to those who love to play the sport of volleyball. Okay, Saturday, June twenty-eighth, that is buzz, no, what are we at? Twenty-fourth.
This Saturday.
Twenty-eight, man, this Saturday. I got to get my dates right here. Free Rabies Clinic. It's very, very well-attended, so call nine-seven-three-two-nine-two-six-seven-three-one with any questions to animal control. Pre-registration is not required, but it fills up pretty quick. A lot of people come here with their pets. Are you going to be here, council president?
I will not.
You aren't going to be here. You have, though, used it.
I have used it.
Yes.
It's a great service.
As we have. So again, Rabies Vaccination Clinic, it is free, and it is this Saturday from eleven to one PM, right here at Town Hall. Sunday, the thirteenth of July, noon to three-thirty, please mark your calendars, and those in the newsbee and Morristown Green, I'm sure you're covering this. This is welcoming Lafayette back to Morristown with the parade and welcome ceremony reenactment. That is Sunday, July thirteenth, noon to three-thirty, there's going to be stuff going on all weekend, so really pay attention to that. It's going to be posted on the, it's posted on the website, it's out on Instagram, it's out on Facebook, it's out on, on the, on their website, tourists, all that stuff is out there, so it's really important that we welcome Lafayette back. He's really coming here. Few years older, but he's coming back. And it's pretty cool, when you really think of the history of what he did for our nation. And those who don't know history, we will get a two-minute history lesson right now. In seventeen-eighty, Lafayette came to Morristown at the age of nineteen, traveling from France to Boston via ship, and then trailed it down from Boston to Morristown to let George Washington know in Morristown that six thousand elite French troops were coming to aid the Continental Army in seventeen-eighty, which was the key to the victory of what now is the United States of America. And he also bought millions of dollars, which was key for us to continue the war effort. What amazes me is that he was nineteen years old, and when you think about that, you know, nineteen, and how Jersey played such an important part, and Morristown played such an important part in our country's history. And so he's coming back, and then he did another tour years later, he came back to tour twenty, I think, twenty, twenty places, I think. But that's what this whole reenactment is, when he came back, as, you know, retired. He lived, in that day and age, to live as long as he did was a pretty long life. I will be there in costume, but I think it's retired general, so I think it's just a period suit, it's not going to be actual general. But it's going to be a lot of fun, so really come out, man, that's what Morristown's all about, right? July fourteenth, it's a Monday, you have a ten-thirty to one-thirty symposium on Lafayette Human Rights Champion at the Morris County Library, so that's going to be really cool if you have time during the day. On the fourteenth, it's ten-thirty to one-thirty at the Human Rights Champion at Morris County Library. More information on Welcome Lafayette Back to Morristown, visit Instagram, @MorristownLovesLafayette. Y'all got that?
Mm-hmm.
Send that out to your constituents, please. Again, it's Instagram, @MorristownLovesLafayette. Saturday, July nineteenth, you want to make a comment? This is you, isn't it? Are you at their future on the nineteenth?
Oh, yeah, that's in a partnership with the Durbin Walker, who's putting on a Caribbean festival.
Okay, so it's not going to be your event?
Yeah, it's not my event, but we help sponsor it because, you know, we are our youth their future.
Five oh one three six.
Five oh one C three, so we partner with them so that they can do something for their heritage within the Morristown community.
All right, terrific. So that's on the nineteenth, at eleven AM, in concert with Our Youth Their Future, there'll be an event at Granby Park, so come on down. At twelve PM.
Centro Biblical Church, our festival, Hope Festival on Caldwell Park. We have been doing this festival for about twenty years. We started at the Green, and then we moved to Caldwell a few years ago, and we have a great attendance every year. We have music, hamburgers, hot dogs, and different things for the community, so I think it's a good place to be that day. Thank you.
All right, so that's on Saturday, twelve PM.
Correct, twelve to five.
Twelve to five, on the nineteenth, and that will be held at Caldwell.
Caldwell.
Caldwell Park, terrific. Sunday, July twentieth, twelve to five, it's Diversity Day Celebration on the Morristown Green, free food, prizes, multicultural talent throughout the day, organized by the Diversity Coalition of Morris County. They do a really good job for Diversity Day, so mark your calendars for July twentieth. And mark your calendars for August sixteenth. We're really going far out here, because we only have a meet, one meeting in July and one meeting in August. August sixteenth is our Jazz and Blues Festival. Visit MorristownJazzAndBlues.com for more lineup and details. Come out, it's a great day, it's from twelve to ten, it's free, and it's, I kind of pushed that day on behalf, it's my mother's birthday, so since it's my festival, I can do that. And, but the key thing is, no taxpayer dollars get used, it's all privately funded. Again, it's Morristown Jazz and Blues Festival, or MorrisonJazzBlues.com for lineup and details, and that is all I have, council president.
Thank you, sir. We will move forward with council liaison reports. Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes, good evening. We did, the Housing Authority meeting was held six-twenty-three, twenty-five at Manhattan Village Residence Center. The resident came out, they had concerns. The executive of housing assured them that they would address all their concerns, and today I did speak to Allison and follow up on some of the places that the air conditioning wasn't working properly, they was on point fixing them, and the new staff that is hired down there is doing a great job.
Thank you. Councilman Russo.
Planning board meeting this week is not happening, so nothing until August.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Silva.
Yes, Morris Parking Authority, we have Nicole here, and I think one of the members of the board. The Parking Authority had its regular meeting on June eighteen. I asked a couple of questions. One was regarding on the increase, the talks that they had on the increase of parking on the streets, so they like to revisit that. We had here some debate about it, so I think it is a good topic to take maybe for next agenda on new items. Also, I asked feedback on the events from Homestead, and as I stated before, they didn't receive any complaints. On other things, they have open positions, recruiting for property manager position, and the applications can be found at npanj.org. Solar EV, the weather has delayed the project, and they expect completion for, date for the solar EV project at the Hart for the end of June, and for Dalton for mid-July. Dalton Restoration, twenty-twenty-five, work is underway. Conditions assessment, reassessment is authorized for Ann Bank Garage, and conditions assessment for the Hart Garage will take place once solar project is completed. On Lot Ten, path hole repaired, line stripping has been in their list for the spring, but due to the weather, it was delayed. They had completed some on June eighteen and nineteen. For the two thousand and nineteen, from the two thousand and nineteen plans that they had for a garage, what I was told is that that fell apart, and it now will be an entirely new project. There are a lot of things that they have to consider. One of the phrases is a lot of moving parts. They're focused on acquiring Dumont and Pine Properties, so they can continue. They are focused on acquiring Dumont and Pine properties, so they can continue working that project, and tonight we have something in the agenda to approve for them.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, we can move to regular business.
Okay, there are no ordinances for introduction this evening. There are three for public hearing and adoption. The first is ordinance number O dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, ordinance of the town of Morristown and the county of Morris, New Jersey, authorizing the guarantee of the payment of the principal of and interest on revenue bonds of the Parking Authority of the town of Morristown, and any notes issued in anticipation thereof in an amount not to exceed seven million five hundred thousand dollars to be issued by the Parking Authority of the town of Morristown for the purpose of providing additional security therefor and determining certain other matters in connection therewith.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number O dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing on ordinance O dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five only. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from council?
Yes, council president, I would suggest we table this. I read the memorandum that accompanied the package. This is a borrowing that is basically guaranteed by the town. This is being borrowed on the town's credit rating, and again, I give a lot of credit to both Frank and Jillian and the mayor and administration. We have a very, very strong credit rate. This is seven point five million. I actually think, I personally, I would expect more information to be presented with this. I would expect to see the financials. The last time we heard from the Parking Authority on the status of their financials, they were weak because of COVID, they did not have the revenue, and they were worried about their own financials. And that at that time was being said, one of the other reasons why Lot Ten was not proceeding was because of that financial difficulty. So to be extending credit, which is what we're doing here, okay, I think we should actually have a full financial picture of the status of the Parking Authority. Second piece on that is, I do find it interesting that they're buying the two properties. They were pretty definitive with the prior plan. We had seen that plan. They came here and they did present that plan from two thousand and nineteen, which was much appreciated. If that plan is going to be amended, it's going to impact some of my constituents in that ward, because it's very interesting, the properties that they're purchasing, is traffic now going to go out onto Pine? What's going to be the impact on, on the Hart? What's going to be, because last time, the parking, the traffic was actually going out towards Morris, not coming in towards the neighborhood. And again, very protective of the remaining neighborhoods that we have in our community. I'd like to see more about the plan before we actually vote on the bonding to facilitate the purchase of these properties, and we should, in my opinion, we should be seeing the plan before we vote to facilitate the plan. So I, I would recommend that we table this, bring it back, bring, and have Nicole, and maybe finance, maybe even have Frank comment on any impact it might have on our credit rating, on our lending. Again, you guys have, we're paying down the debt of this town, okay? We're not increasing the debt of this town. I would like to see the financials, understand the financial status, what the impact of the bonding's going to have on the town, whether or not the Parking Authority can actually service the debt service associated with the bonds, and also have a general idea of what is changing from the plan from two thousand and nineteen that they had presented, and actually, actually maybe even get some messages out to the people that live in that area so that if they do have concerns, they can come and listen.
Councilman Silva, do you have any thoughts? I know you were at the recent meeting regarding this.
Well, I think that if Nicole is here, maybe as part of public speaking on the ordinance, she can speak and give some information.
Actually, procedurally, I'm sorry, just because I believe, councilman, if I heard you quickly, you were making a motion to table. Is that accurate?
Correct. That's what he's...
I actually, I, I'm going to vote no.
So you're not moving the table?
I will tell you if it's, if it's going to, if it's, I would make a motion to table it, because, pass Silva, this is not the kind of thing that Nicole can come up. It should be a prepared presentation. It should be a preparation on the financials. We should see the financials in the package before we vote on it, okay? That's what we should be doing as part of our responsibility.
So do we have a second to table? Second to table? No?
Motion fails.
Okay.
You ready?
No, let's call them.
On the adoption of ordinance number O dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Ayanakone.
No.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbria.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance O dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five is adopted. Ordinance number O dash twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the town of Morristown and the county of Morris, State of New Jersey, for compensation for the elected mayor, town council members, and council president in the town of Morristown, New Jersey, and amending all ordinances concerning such compensation, heretofore adopted.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number O dash twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing on ordinance O twenty-four only. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from council? On the adoption of ordinance O dash twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five, councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Ayanakone.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbria.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance O dash twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five is adopted. Ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the town of Morristown and the county of Morris, State of New Jersey, for compensation for management slash non-union positions in the town of Morristown, New Jersey, and amending all ordinances concerning such compensation, heretofore adopted.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing on ordinance O twenty-five only. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from council? On the adoption of ordinance O dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five, councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Ayanakone.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
Council President Umbria.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance O dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five is adopted. There are nine resolutions for adoption tonight. Would any member of council like to pull any for separate consideration? Then I would ask for a motion, please, to adopt resolution numbers ninety-one, twenty twenty-five through ninety-nine, twenty twenty-five.
I will make that motion.
Second.
On the adoption of those nine resolutions, councilwoman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Ayanakone.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lindsay.
Yes.
Councilman Russo.
Yes.
Councilman Silva.
Yes.
And council president Umbria.
Yes.
Motion carries. Those resolutions are adopted.
Thank you. We have no unfinished old business, no new business. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting...